City study session to order Tuesday, June 19th, 2018. We have one item on the agenda. It is the discussion regarding the possible amendments to the University North Park project plan. You should have the following attachments: the UNP Transmittal Memorandum, the UNP Presentation, and the UNP amended project plan draft, all of which you all have seen. So at this time, I believe that Emily Pomeroy is going to be doing the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Emily Pomeroy. I am with the Center for Economic Development Law, legal counsel to the city of Norman as it reviews the proposed University North Park project. Good to be in front of you again. We have been spending significant time putting together the bones of a structure that will allow for the financing of the build-out of the north portion of University North Park if the city decides to move forward with that. And we're here today to talk about the structure of the project plan, to see if that's something that the city would like to continuing, continue examining in relationship to the proposed Calson RTKL master plan and in, and consistent with the Local Development Act for the approval of a project plan. Of course, as you know, there's a statutory process that must be followed if we are going to amend the project plan. So today is just an opportunity to talk about what a proposed amendment might look like and whether the city would like to continue forward with the process of considering it. We wanted to walk through a few of the changes that have been made to the structure from the last presentation that was given to you, so we'll be talking about that today and talking about steps within the Local Development Act if the city decides to move forward. And of course, try to address any questions that you might have. I believe in addition to the documents that the mayor mentioned were in your packet. He received one yesterday. That is a supplement, which we will talk about. I have that here today, and we will talk about the details of it. So you're very familiar with the Calson RTKL master plan at this point, and you're also familiar with the things I've listed here, which I believe are reasons why the city may want to consider whether providing public financial assistance to the proposed project is something that the city would like to do. Of course, the important thing is the enticement of significant private investments. And the project in front of you provides the framework for significant private investment, not only in the proposed entertainment district, but also in the multifamily and civil family residential components and office components that are proposed north of Rock Creek Road. The living options are an opportunity to meet some of the needs that the city has been faced with lately in current studies that show the outmigration of youngish people from the city of Norman. So searching for ways that the city can help attract and retain these young professionals. We believe strongly that non-retail job growth is a key component to that equation. I know you know that, and we think that the proposed development provides opportunities for significant non-retail investment and job growth. Of course, the issues with the budget have presented the need for the city to consider significant ways to provide funding to the general fund. The structure that we'll talk about today provides significant relief beginning in fiscal year 2019 to the city's general fund, so we want to talk to you in some detail about that. The, our taxing jurisdiction partners in this project from day one are also, it's important that they continue to receive significant returns from investment in this project, including very specifically the Norman Public Schools, which, as you know, receive funding outside of the state aid formula. We also have goals from the 2006 project plan that are yet to be accomplished. We have some, the city has some contractual obligations that should be met or renegotiated if the city wants to do so. So we seek in this project plan structure to allow for the completion of those original project goals and objectives. And we also try to specifically address the increase in revenues to Norman Forward and the public safety sales tax, and also nailing down the Norman Forward projects on North Base. Again, just TIF 101, no new taxes are being proposed here in this development. It is the capture and allocation of new revenues that are generated by development. That's what we're looking at here when we talk about increment. So discussion with you and others in the community have led to us taking into account in this draft project plan, significant feedback that we've received. Some of those recommendations are listed here, and some of those that we've received from the review committee are also attempted to be accounted for in this draft project plan. And that includes finding funding for the senior center, not using cultural facility money outside of the increment district, and adding a county project to the overall project plan, which we'll talk about all of those tonight. So some structural changes from the last draft, structural matters that we talked about as a group. The current project plan proposes for the allocation of 70% of incremental sales tax revenues for a period of five years to go directly to the city. That means that 30% would go to pay authorized project costs from 2019 to 2023. Councilmember Hickman.
Does, would the 70% include the 10% cannibalization or whatever that, the growth rate calculation is, or is the 70% the maximum?
So that's one thing that we've changed. 70% does not include, before we had 70% and then a 10% transfer adjustment, which is what you just referred to. As drafted, we have 70% plus a flat transfer adjustment of $800,000.
Why?
That's because we wanted to take what has been over the history for the past 12 years of the project, then a, it's a rounded up, a rounded up amount that has been the constant for the transfer adjustment over the life of the project, and we put it at a fixed number. That's important for a couple of different reasons. Number one, it provides more stability when the private guys are looking at the financeability of the project. So instead of a fluctuating number, they know that it's a baseline that's, you know, not available for project costs. It's just going, it's a flat amount that's just going to the city, and it's not available to them for project cost. Secondly, it avoids the need for city staff to go through the calculation of the transfer adjustment, and we're hoping that that will help decrease both the costs associated with implementation of the project plan and also the, just the headache of doing that monthly report of what sales taxes are cannibalized from elsewhere in the city of Norman.
Don't we anticipate that that number would be going up if we didn't make any change as more development continues?
We don't anticipate that it'll go up.
Why?
That's because the majority of the property south of Rock Creek Road is developed out. Of course, we, we have a large, large tract of the Lifestyle Center, which has yet to be developed. The project plan as drafted calls for an $800,000 flat transfer adjustment plus cannibalization of the remainder of the, of the developments moving forward.
What I'm saying, Emily, is if we didn't make any change to the existing TIF, and the Lifestyle Center was developed under the current transfer adjustment clause, that $800,000 number would likely go up if there was cannibalization within the Lifestyle Center and other, that affected other parts of the community. You'd agree with that, right?
Yes, and that's why the project plan allows for the transfer adjustment to continue for any development moving forward. What this does is it just puts an amount on the transfer adjustments that's happened in the past and cuts that off at the very top. But it, but it, the project plan as drafted has the exact same calculation, for example, what would go into the Lifestyle Center. If what's developed in the Lifestyle Center is taking a store that currently exists in Norman and just relocating it to the Lifestyle Center property, then the transfer adjustment as Norman currently knows it would continue.
So there, so my, I guess that's where I got confused. So is there a 10% or up to 10% transfer adjustment provision still in the project, the amended project plan that would, that would kick in that could make that 70% number 80%? For example, is there, and is there still a growth rate provision in there as well?
Yes, there's still the average annualized growth rate provision that requires a certain, the city overall to have certain growth before money can be provided towards.
So does that 70% include those percentages preloaded, or is it 70%, and it could be more if those other provisions kicked in?
It's 70%, and it could be more if those other provisions kicked in.
I have one quick. Councilmember Beerman. Clarification, is the 70% just from the UNP South, number two, TIF District number two, or is it the combined area?
It's combined. It's combined. So one other thing, and to the point that I was trying to make to Councilman Hickman, the other reason we think that the transfer adjustment or the cannibalization issue will be less is because, because of the limitation of commercial development north of Rock Creek Road. So, you know, I just point that out to say, if a, if a restaurant that it currently exists in Norman relocates to the Entertainment District, for example, then the transfer adjustment calculation would apply to that restaurant, meaning the sales taxes collected would not be available to pay authorized project costs. But, but the reason I say I think it'll be less is because I, you know, because of the limitation of retail north, that's just the lesser chance, the lesser likelihood of that area. A councilmember Beerman.
Follow-up question. How, how limited is that retail development? Because if you look at Section 13 under miscellaneous provisions, it says approval of amended planned unit development, allowing retail development on the property north of Rock Creek Road is necessary for implementation of the project.
So that was the PUD that was just approved by Planning Commission last week or the week before, and it changed the restriction from, I'm probably going to get it wrong, 50% to 57%? We're looking at.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, so it is a slight increase, but the, that's just in the Entertainment District, and that's to accommodate what the presentations of the master plan have shown as restaurants, there will be significant bar restaurant development there, and some small retail shops, they've been described to me, and I think in the master plan they show as like a, you know, OU souvenir store, or, you know, something like that.
Just in that area that was outlined, just in the entertainment area.
And the PUD amendment does not, right, exactly. The PUD amendment does not allow for retail development in what, in the master plan is depicted as residential development.
Councilmember Alves.
So there might be a little bit of confusion is that in the retail calculation, you're including restaurants. Is that right?
Yes, that has been the case to date, and that can, will continue to be the case.
And so that's why I think people are confused when they see the retail number. They think retail is in like friggin' most product retail.
Yeah.
But it's really, the retail could also be a food and beverage establishment. And so that traditional retail as we know it is going to be a smaller amount of that 57% is going to be mostly food and beverage entertainment.
Counselor. Counselmember Holman.
So can you tell me about, I guess, a most recent example would be Chili's moving from a different part of town to the UNP South half. So what did, what is that, as far as a transfer, what would that mean as far as the revenue generated by that Chili's going?
That means that the revenue.
Because it moved from somewhere else in town, shut down the other location.
It is subject to transfer adjustment. It's already in the number now, which is a little less than 800,000, but it's already in that number. So that will stay in the 800,000. So is it, that kind of freezes that level of transfer adjustment moving forward?
So is it, is it like when Chili's was in Edno Parkway, the sales tax that was being generated by that location, we're still getting at least that?
100%.
Right.
Even though it's moved to the UNP.
It means that the sales tax generated by that store are not eligible to pay authorized project costs. It means they go to the city's.
Do you know how many businesses have moved actually from a different place in Norman to the UNP ever?
I think it's, I think it's like three.
Anthony was speaking up. He thought maybe 11.
Oh, 11.
Okay. Thank you.
Would those include, they have to physically close their doors to move them there, right? It's not like Subway haven't opened a location.
Well, like McAllisters, though, didn't close their Lindsay Street location, they just opened a second.
That's a brand new one, so there's no adjustment for that.
Right, right. It's only if they close a location, then.
And what if the building that they vacate becomes reoccupied? Like in instance, the Chili's, it's going to be reoccupied by a new restaurant. Does it, do we still continue that transfer adjustment?
You get to offset whatever the year's sales of that new occupant is. You get to offset that from the base transfer adjustment.
And that's why it's a lot, it sounds like it's a lot of work in Anthony's apartment to do these adjustments, to do all this.
That's why it requires the, yeah, the regular monitoring to know where the adjustments are. So we think that this provides simplicity and also provides a fixed number, so that the people from the outside that are looking at financeability, for example, the city's financial analysis that will help if, if the project moves forward, they know, you know, that that's, that's coming out, that's money that's not available. It's not this unknown that may be like this one year and like this the next year.
And it's not that we couldn't train a new person, but Suzanne was doing all of that, and Suzanne is no longer with us. And so locking, there are some benefits, just administration-wise, to lock that in, particularly if it's at a higher level than what it is right now, and then starting fresh moving forward. So we'll still have the protection of the transfer adjustment moving forward, in case there's any new stores that do that, we'll still keep track of that.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So theoretically, if no new stores move, if nobody moves out there going forward, we've locked in a higher rate than what it would ever be.
That's correct.
Right, yes, we've aired on, or we've negotiated to the high side of what the transfer adjustment might be. We've endeavored to do that.
If somebody does move out there, we've still got the, the higher rate on the previous transfer adjustment.
If somebody does.
We still go with the normal formula.
So to date, moving forward, if someone does move out there and it's a transfer from elsewhere in Norman, then the transfer adjustment as written still applies. So this just nails in historically what the transfer adjustment has been as opposed to monitoring it as new.
A little bit higher rate.
Yes, last year was, I forget what the exact number was, 70.
70 cent, I think.
760 cents.
Councilmember Beerman.
What mechanism is there to control for the flow of dollars? So as an example, if a whole bunch of cool new bars open in the north part, what is to control for the, the loss of dollars from, potential loss of dollars, I guess I should say, from other parts of Norman, like Campus Corner? Is there anything?
So that's speaking to the cannibalization issue.
It's not a movement of a business, it's just movement of, of dollars spent.
Okay, couple different things on that point. We, we still have in the draft project plan this average annualized growth rate requirement that requires that the growth rate through the entire city reach a certain point before money can be allocated towards project costs. So that's meant to provide a protection to the growth overall. And also, we, we, you know, the, the purpose of this project is to bring new activity to the city of Norman, and we believe that this type of investment can do that. It's meant to bring new residents and new visitors, not take away from people that are doing things elsewhere in Norman. I think that the location of this project provides for that, and its density can provide for that. I, I think absolutely there are people that will be in Campus Corner and in downtown Norman that won't be in UNP, and I hope that to be the case. You know, I think that there, in my opinion, there's room enough in Norman for boat, for all three of those districts, for lack of a better word, to exist. And I know that the, this net new, you know, is a big component of what city council is analyzing, as well they should, and we're, we're endeavoring to, to address that. But, you know, part of the reason why we've been pushing for, on the, when speaking with the developer, is to, you know, we've been pushing really hard for the amount of incremental sales tax that go to the city, particularly in the first five years, to help with the budget issue. And that's because, you know, if the developer believes in the project, then let's do this. You know, if the developer believes that it's going to generate the revenue necessary to go build an arena and an entertainment district, it's there, you know, it's, it's on them to get out there and do it. And if they don't do it, then none of these revenues are generated.
What is the annualized growth rate?
So the annualized growth rate currently is 4.5%, so citywide growth has to reach 4.5%. In the project plan, we have provided an alternative, two alternatives. The first is a 15, looking back 15 years at what the average annualized growth rate was. The reason we did that is because the 4.5 was chosen back in 2005, when we were framing the original project plan, looking back 20, over 20 years of growth over the city of Norman. And that's how we came with the 4.5, which we put into the project plan to provide as a protection for just this issue that you've raised. Now, the truth of it is that over the 12 years of the project, the citywide growth rate has been 3.76%, not 4.5, which, you know, means that we're, have not reached that 4.5, 4.5 growth over, I think it's three years, maybe two or three years. And that's important for a couple of different reasons. One, because the nature of retail and shopping is very different than it was in 2005 and 2006, and even more so over the last, like, eight, nine years. So the, you know, the brick and mortar retail, as everyone knows, and this is an issue Norman has been addressing, trying to address for a while, has changed. Oklahoma City is fighting the same battle. Communities all over the state are fighting the same battle because we, because Oklahoma is, is subject only to sales tax. So the 3.7 is a realistic picture of what's happened over the last 12 years, and the opportunity for use tax to be a part of that equation, I think, helps us look at the baseline number in a more accurate way. Use tax is important because it's growing based on, you know, the Amazon, the new law that has, that allows for use tax to be provided from sales for Amazon, and a, a big case that's in front of the United States Supreme Court now could have an effect on communities all over Oklahoma, that use tax will, will raise that even more. So we want to be realistic about what the picture is now. We don't want to put the overall growth rate in harm's way. You know, we want to reach for, reach for that, that big number. And we think that if the developer will act and do the investment that it's projecting in the, in the RTKL plan and in the PUD, that this really will become a moot issue because sales tax across the city will increase. I mean, I think that the growth that can happen here, you know, last year, the growth in UNP was over 6%. So the growth that can happen here can be a boost to all the entire, to the entire city, because it's bringing in new spenders, not because it's taking away from downtown or taking away from Campus Corner. Now, that's theoretical, but that's what I think, that the, that the development, if they build what they are claiming they're going to build, can have that type of positive impact.
Councilmember Hickman.
Okay, so I'm a little confused on your third bullet. Allocation of 20% of incremental construction sales and use tax revenues to city or life of project. Currently, doesn't the city receive 100% of the sales and use tax revenues in the TIF area currently? Only sales taxes held?
Yes.
So why are we giving up 80% of our sales and use tax to the project and only retaining 20%? That's a new little item there, it seems to me.
Right, this is a new one that I had yet to get to.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, you're fine, this is fine to talk about. So you might recall that the review committee recommended that a project cost item be included to fund a project at the county fairgrounds. So that's something that we looked into based on the recommendation of, of the review committee, and the addition of a project cost of $5 million was an interesting one to wrestle with, because we're not dealing with a lot of, you know, superfluous revenues. We've, we've been this thing down a lot. So one way to try to fund that was to introduce a new component to the sales tax piece, which is a, a construction sales tax.
Well, couldn't, another way to fund that be to allocate more of the funds from the Adlorm Partners into the TIF area to raise more money, as opposed to taking money from the city? For example, if 50% is going to the project, couldn't 60 or 70% go to the project out of the Adlorm funds?
I, I think that there's more than one way to split the.
Just one extra, I understood.
To split the allocation, yes. We've tried to be pretty consistent with the allocations. You'll, you'll note here in a minute that we do increase the revenues, the, the allocations of the Adlorm from 50/50 to 60/40. So we'll talk about that, that here in a minute. But this, the introduction of the construction sales tax piece is an effort to try to find a way to help fund that project if that's what is decided in the adoption of the project plan. Oh, right, thank you, Jeff. The addition of the construction sales tax piece as increment also allows for the opportunity for matching funds from the state of Oklahoma through the Local Development Act and Enterprise Zone Incentive Leverage Act, is what it's called. The state will match sales taxes that are not used for retail if they are determined by the Department of Commerce to be net new to the state. And based on our initial conversations with Commerce, we believe that the construction sales tax of the north half could qualify for this match of the leverage act, which would mean an increase, a one-for-one increase of those construction sales taxes that are allocated to pay authorized project costs. So we think construction, based on our projections, we think that construction sales taxes can generate over $8 million in the bill out of the north, and if matched dollar for dollar by the state, then, you know, you're at 16.
So do we end up getting back? I know, I remember that conversation, and at first I thought it was total replacement, so that we really wouldn't be losing any of that use tax, because, because I'm concerned about this piece of it. But what you're saying is it'll be more, but it won't be, won't be replacement.
It won't be. It'll be the amount that, any amount matched will be used to pay authorized project costs.
But then when that is, when that is paid, the $5 million, then do we start getting 100% use tax again?
Currently, as drafted, the 80/20 split is, is through the, the life of the project. It's drafted that way to also help buffer what, the need of, of project costs to fund the assistance and development financing, should the city choose to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see that arena, but that's putting, that's putting more cost into the TIF. That, that's a concern of mine. Okay, Councilmember Beerman and then Castleberry have.
Clarification, when it says construction sales and use tax revenues, I assume that means construction sales tax and then use tax revenues?
No, that's kind of a euphemism, construction sales and use tax.
Okay, so we're not talking about the use tax generated by the residential area of the north part that might do significant shopping online, let's say, and pay use tax that way?
It's on the materials.
No, no. Right, construction. Right, yeah, this, yes, so construction sales and use tax is meant to refer to just those taxes that are paying on the materials that come to be, to build the arena and build the parking garage and build all the houses.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry.
So on that, is it fair to say that we have leveraged that sales and use tax, and we've doubled it? In other words, say it was going to generate $5 million of use tax on the, on the, on the arena, we're actually going to get $10 million to go into the project cost. We'll get 40%.
We will, it, it has to be approved by Commerce, but our initial indications are that we, that that could be matched, yes. The amount that's provided toward, so the 80% that's provided towards project.
We do the 80/20 split.
Yes.
Okay, so. So that, might that allow this to be paid off sooner?
Yes.
It does, and it allowed us.
It does, and it allowed us a funding mechanism for the Fairgrounds project without having to reduce what the other taxing jurisdictions may be getting.
But it reduces what the city gets?
It, it does add as a component of the sales tax increment, construction sales tax, yes.
Which is not currently a part of the increment.
We would be getting 100% of. Correct. So we won't get any, the city won't get any if the build-out doesn't occur.
So it's just bouncing.
But there would be. Councilmember Wilson.
So I thought that was one of our big, like, selling points for this thing was that we'd have an immediate injection to our general fund of those, those use taxes on the construction of said parking garages and arenas and stuff.
So that's what I wanted to...
My skipping ahead.
No, you're fine, that's exactly where I was turning to next. So in the supplement that was provided to you yesterday, I endeavored to do a breakdown of this issue of immediate relief to the, to the general fund. So in fiscal year 2018, the city, with the transfer adjustment, received $3.7 million. And the project plan as drafted, with the 70% to the city plus the $800,000 in the fixed transfer adjustment, provides the city $5.8 million. So, you know, quick math, that difference there is 2.1. So that provides an additional 2.1 million to the general fund because of the large increase, the 70-30 plus, the 70-30 split plus the $800,000 to the city. I showed that through the first five years of the project, if, if it occurs as projected in the Calhoun RTKL master plan. You'll note a couple of big jumps there. One is because the entertainment district comes online, and one is because of the, I think... I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Jeff, the Lifestyle Center, because the Lifestyle Center comes online. So this is where we're endeavoring to address that, the issue, the budget, the budget issue with the significant change in allocation from the 60-40 to 70-30 with the fixed transfer adjustment.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So for clarification, you've got the very bottom there, that it's got the average annual growth rate at 4%. Is that now 3.77?
So I have that here because the average annualized growth rate adjustment in the last couple of years has, has not been met.
Right.
Meaning we, the citywide growth has not reached 4.5%. And our projections show citywide growth of 4%. So that's meant to account for the fact that we're not reaching that growth. Of course, growth inside the, inside UMP has been significantly higher than 4.5%, but we're obviously not just concerned with growth inside UMP. We're concerned with growth outside of the increment district as well. So what the project plan does is it has an option to choose the 4.5, keep the 4.5% as the average annualized growth rate or use this 15-year lookback. And we think the lookback on the average annualized growth rate might be important because it shifts then with, with what the city is doing. You know, if the city has a few good years, then that number, which is currently 3.76, would shift a little bit. And then we wouldn't, you know, we would have some leeway in terms of financeability as to what the number, what number had to be reached in order for the money to be provided to project costs. And then we've also allowed for, because of the need to make sure that financeability can happen, I mean, that's been one of the key components in trying to address this thing in our conversations with the foundation representatives, is the unknown of that average annualized growth rate. So we think that the flexibility of the 15-year lookback can help with the financeability question. And, you know, the opportunity to be able to negotiate what that average annualized growth rate is, we think is really important. And as drafted, that's built into the project plan.
Councilmember Wilson.
So on your 15-year lookback, has it been, has the data been extracted for the rest of the city excluding the TIF on growth rate?
Yes, it's a citywide 15-year lookback.
No, excluding the TIF. That's not been extracted?
No, that's not the way the current deal was set up either. It looks citywide.
I'm just trying to make a decision, so I want to know what has happened to the rest of the city.
Yes.
City, yeah. Is that data available?
Yes, yes.
The data on just the rest of the city?
It's not related that way, but it could be, yeah.
And the growth rate outside of the increment district should be retrievable from the information that we have. Maybe an email?
I think Councilmember Hittman. Didn't you have your...
I guess I'm still confused. Why are we changing the analyzed growth rate and this transfer adjustment? Why don't we just leave it like the prior version of the slides that we were presented? You know, it had 70% plus 10%, you know, it was basically an 80-20 split for these first group of years. I guess, is it, I'm not sure I understand a, a good reason why we are tinkering with that when it seems that's a system that has worked, albeit, I understand it takes some time and effort, but that's, you know, what the job is.
Right, so the, the, the 80% set the transfer adjustment at 10%, as you recall. And all we've done is, is instead of setting it as a percentage, we've set it at a flat rate. And the, the part that's good for the city on this front is the 7, the 10% in the previous, when you take out 10%, equated to $700,000. And then when you do it this way, as a fixed rate, we've, we've been able, in conversations with the foundation, to lock it in at $800,000.
Just in my rough calculations, in FY 2021, in the first two years, it looks like the city comes out ahead, based on the projections at the 70% plus $800,000. But in FY 2021, it begins to be that the city comes out behind if you went 70 plus 10% versus the 70% plus $800,000. And so I understand that starting out in year one, the $800,000 is a little bit more than what it might be. But you would agree with me that over time, the city ends up being upside down in that it's not as good a deal for the city. And I just am concerned that as those numbers and projections continue to go up, because what I'm seeing is 70% plus $800,000, it ends up being a bad deal for the city. It might be in the first year or two. But like I said, when I just take the numbers and crunch them in FY 21, you know, and, and multiply that number by 80% versus 70% plus $800,000, the city ends up getting less revenue. And maybe I'm misunderstanding still.
Well, I think that maybe the one thing that you're not considering is the fact that if stores moving forward relocate from elsewhere outside of Norman, the transfer adjustment, as drafted and as we all know, applies. So that would be in, on top of and in addition to the $800,000.
Yeah, but that's not the transfer adjustment, which is what we're getting, the sort of, not, 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 I don't mean, I mean the growth percentage.
Right, two separate issues, two separate issues.
Yeah, I understand.
The $800,000 is the base of the transfer adjustment from years past. And any transfers that are, you know, cannibalization that occurs, the transfer adjustment will be calculated, just as it has been, moving forward. Because it's a...
It's worn, well, it didn't now.
This, this amount has been fixed at $800,000 and will continue at that. And that's based on all stores, you know, those 11 stores or three stores, or however many it is, that have transferred up to this point. The project plan calls for the transfer adjustment formula, as it's currently drafted, to continue from this state forward for any new future developments. So if, if a product, if a store that exists now in Norman relocates to the Lifestyle Center, then those, those revenues, sales tax revenues generated by it would not be available to pay project costs. They would go to the city. But what we're doing is we're, you know, we're really hopeful. I mean, the goal is that there are no more transfer adjustments. I mean, I think that's, if it's a good development, you know, if we get the development that the city wants and the city hopes to see, that, that, that there are very, very few of those moving forward.
Under the project plan, the minimum project plan as currently drafted, would the growth rate adjustment be triggered?
In what circumstance?
As it is currently. If this, if this project plan was in force and effect, as, as amended, it has a, it has a growth rate adjustment provision in, right?
Yes.
Would it be triggered? And meaning that would the city be meeting that growth rate that's required under this project plan, as drafted?
Based on growth in 2018, or?
Yes.
We would not reach to a 4.5% average annualized growth rate.
Well, but I thought it was being adjusted from the 4.5% to the 15-year average or the 3-point whatever.
Oh, so would it meet the 3.76? I don't think we would, no.
Still won't in the first year.
We would not.
We would get more.
Which means that the average annualized growth rate calculation would apply, and less money would be available to pay authorized project costs, and more money would go to the city's general fund. But again, what we're hoping is that that issue at some point in the very near future becomes moot and that the, you know, we're not having to deal with the average annualized growth rate calculation. But that's incumbent upon the developer to bring in the development that...
But if it doesn't, if it doesn't, the general fund's protected.
If we doesn't, then we're protected because of the average annualized growth rate. Okay, so that's the first five years in terms of relief to the city's general fund. And then the impact on the city moving forward, I just wanted to, to show you because I know you've seen a similar slide, that, that since the allocations have changed, that for 2024 to 2031, average amounts to the city from all three TIF districts are approximately $9.5 million. And then moving forward, the sales tax increment to the city is significantly smaller from TIF 4 and TIF 5. That's because of the small amount of retail development that's occurring, small, small amount of sales tax generation that's occurring north of Broad Creek Road. But in addition to that, because TIF 2 has terminated in 2031, the city sees $3.5 million per year generated from TIF 2. So just for a little perspective, you know, even if that amount doesn't grow at all, through 2043, that's over $160 million to the city's general fund.
You said $3.5 million, you mean $13.6?
I'm sorry, I, I said, yeah, I said $13.5 million. That's the 13.62 that I'm trying to refer to. So just talking about the compounding impact of that. And so that $163 million is assuming no additional growth in TIF 2 upon its termination in 2031, which I think is an unlikely scenario. I think we'll continue to see growth there. And of course, these revenues don't include Norman Forward Sales Tax or Norman Public Safety Sales Tax or any sales taxes that are generated outside of the increment district.
Councilmember Allison.
A question regarding on these other, the Norman Forward and Public Safety.
Yeah.
But, so that includes a part that we already, some of it we already estimated in the revenue collections for those taxes. What's the net, what's the net new? What is this project, what is this new TIF structure going to add to those two categories?
So...
Do we know?
These, this $22.4 million for Norman Forward, for example, is only based on those sales taxes from within the TIF district.
Yeah, but we're, some of that we would already get, right? So some of that's from TIF 2 that we're already getting, right? I'm just trying to think what's the new, what, what is this?
This is based on growth. This is based on the, on the projected growth.
So it's based on the projected growth. So it's $22, $22 million above what we projected Norman Forward to collect in the original proposal, Norman Forward.
Right, Norman Forward did not assume the growth, you know, the development that we're contemplating.
Right, so I just want to make sure that what, that 22 didn't include the current TIF 2 revenue that's being collected, that was already contemplated in the TIF, in the Norman Forward.
Let, Emily, let me ask Anthony. So right now, on Norman Forward Sales Tax, about, I mean, I know we've seen this 100 times, but about how much are we bringing in every year for Norman Forward Sales Tax from the TIF?
From the TIF?
Well, we don't apportion Norman Forward money.
It comes off the top.
Yeah, it comes off the top, but how much?
We don't keep track of it, but TIF.
Oh, we don't, okay, all right. Okay. Okay, it's, 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 it's in with everything else, so we don't really know how much, okay.
We, we actually do have a, we actually do have a spreadsheet on that, but I didn't bring it with me.
Yeah, I knew it came off the top, but I thought maybe somehow we were tracking how much it was since we can track how much more it's going to be.
We don't back into it, we don't need it.
I just, it's a format that we're trying to transition to with our TIF Oversight Committee that will track that as well, and we haven't quite gotten there yet.
Okay, so I'm moving on to talking about the impact on the taxing jurisdictions. This is the same numbers that you saw in our last time together. The allocations have not changed for the taxing jurisdictions. But this just gives a breakdown of the type of revenues that we believe, based on the projected development, will go to the affected taxing jurisdictions. Of course, the Norman Public Schools number is very high because they receive the majority of the levies and also because they receive dollar-for-dollar because it does not go through the state aid formula. You'll note underneath, when TIF 2 ends, there are additional revenues that go to the affected taxing jurisdictions. The Norman Public Schools number is significantly smaller relatively because of the impact of the state aid school, school formula, which means that they receive about 15 cents on the dollar. So there are amendments to the project cost budget from the last time that we were together. The, the most notable one is the $5 million for the Cleveland County Fairground Project. We talked about that a little bit. So that increases...
Councilmember Wilson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't understand how that works outside of the project. I mean, we're just going to write a new project area? How would that, it's not in our project area?
Right, it's not. The Local Development Act allows for the direct allocation of incremental funds to public entities. And then obviously, the county would qualify as one.
And then that then does not provide any increment to the TIF area either, right?
That's correct. It does not generate increment. It does not generate increment, and it does not generate any sales taxes, even on its, you know, on its property. So these are items to consider, for sure.
Councilmember Allison, then Councilmember Castleberry.
So currently, we are, if you're a nonprofit or a, you know, 501(c)(3), you're paying in lieu, Adlorm, correctly, correct in the TIF?
Yes.
Well, if this, at this project, will this project, the Cleveland County Fairgrounds, will it have a in lieu payment?
It will not be, it's not imposed by the Local Development Act. You know, it's not in the increment district. So it, it would not be subject to the requirements in the Local Development Act that mandate that taxes be paid for those entities.
Could it be a development agreement?
Yeah, we would have to do a development agreement, so some of those things could get fleshed out.
So you could, in the development agreement, put something in there about that, or?
Yes, it would be subject to the negotiation of a development agreement prior to the allocation of the funds.
And I'm, I mean, because I, I do believe in the power of the agritourism and the amount of money that's being made off of these fairgrounds projects and what's happening in Oklahoma City Fairgrounds and all that. I mean, the power of the money involved in this tourism dollars from horse shows to, like, that is amazing. But I do think that we need a little more information about what that, what that project is. I mean, we kind of, I've not really received anything yet about what we're going to do with that $5 million. I would like to see a little more.
Apparently, a study has been completed by the county, and I, I would recommend that the city absolutely needs to have their hands on that before entering into a development agreement for the allocation of any funds for the project. But presumably, it shows increased revenues of $5 to $6 million, which is a big impact on that part of Norman. So I, you know, I think it could have positive benefit, benefits for the entire community. But I absolutely agree, there, where it needs to be a lot more detail before a development agreement is entered into allocating any funds to it.
Councilmember Hittman, oh, Councilmember Castleberry's next, and then you.
I was just going to point out that they've, they've done a study on the economic impact of it. We need to make sure we could look at it first, but I think it's nice to have that impact on the east side of town. But that's, again, once we get our hands on that study, we'll, we can nail down a little better, and we need to review that closely.
And again, this would just provide it in the structure that that's something we could do. But just like these other pieces, we'll have to have a development agreement, or we'll have to have the study. We'll work through all that, we'll have to come to an agreement with the county about what's going to be built and how all that's going to work. We have to go through all those steps.
Okay, Councilmember Hickman.
I guess I'm just a little bit confused because the last time I heard the statutory committee talking, including representatives of the county, projects outside of the project area and the tax increment area that did not generate increment were not projects that that committee thought should be funded, even though they were significant community needs, like a senior center. And so I'm just a little confused about how this one is distinguishable from that perspective to a prior initiative and efforts back in February and March. And I'm concerned about putting it in as a project cost, kicking the can down the road to say, we'll work it out in a development agreement, when if there's a study done, then why can't they turn it over to us? If we're supposed to be partners, then put your cards on the table and let's have a conversation and let's see if it makes sense. And I'd like to also know, is there, are there roadway and traffic improvements and who's going to bear that burden? Is that going to be on the city? Is that going to be on the county? Because if there's going to be $6 million worth of activity over there a year, then there may need to be signal lights put in and other road related work done that would be infrastructure work that the city would bear. And I, I just not, I'm just not sure that it makes sense at this point in time without more information, but, you know, but maybe there's information out there, it's not been shared yet, maybe others know about that stuff that some of us don't.
Just make, just make maybe a little bit of clarification, because remember when the, when the review committee, the statutory committee met, they didn't agree to use the cultural center money. They said that was not appropriate. They did say they would be willing to add a project of a senior citizen center. They did say they would be in agreement. It was, however, in the project area. It wasn't outside of the project area, but it wouldn't have generated income. So they, they did agree to another project and that's when this one got brought up. But we don't have the senior citizen center in there right now. And now we do have the fairgrounds. So, so those are all things to consider.
And I, I think that the, the questions you raise, you know, should absolutely be addressed by the review committee. And that would be my, you know, intent. And if, if given the opportunity to present an amended project plan to the review committee, I think that should be a question for them to talk about and address. I do want to make one, just clarifying distinction that the allocation of funds to a public entity is the thing that's specifically authorized by the Local Development Act. So that's the provision under which this project could, could go in. You know, as opposed to, for example, an amendment to the project plan, or, excuse me, project area that would allow for a larger area to be included.
The same way we allocate $3 million to Center City TIF.
Right, so that allocation under the project plan is to the Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, which is another public entity.
So we were able to take, we were able to give Center City $3 million because of the same type of structure.
It's the similar provision that we're relying.
Okay, would you repeat what you said about we're able to do this because?
A specific provision in the Local Development Act allows for the allocation of increment for an authorized project cost to a pub, another public entity.
To, it's the public entity thing, okay.
So that's the distinction there, but I, you know, it's just a.
We are amending the project plan to add this, though, if we did something like this.
Yes, the amendment to the project plan would allow for that allocation to.
I remember clearly in the statutory review committee that the taxing partners were concerned mostly about the increment. That's why I'm, I guess, with Councilmember Hickman on this, that I am very confused. While I appreciate a, a fairground project, it's, doesn't seem like it meets the qualifications that they had set up for the senior center, so.
Well, to be clear, what they said is they didn't want to use cultural money in a non-incremental.
It's a shell game, man.
I, I'm just telling you what they said.
I was there. I remember what they said. And it was because it didn't generate increment. I was there. We're, we're playing a shell game and it's just a little bit irritating.
Clarifying the language.
Okay.
Not saying it right or wrong, just trying to clarify. Any question for you?
Thank you for doing that.
However, we, we're going to discuss the cultural centerpiece because we have removed some money because of the fact that now the university is saying they will put a cultural center museum.
Loan us money for our senior center and then take our money for the, for a cultural center that we very well could define it to be a senior center and put it into an arena. Is exactly what they're asking us to do. Again, I will say it's a shell game. Maybe it's a good one, maybe it's, we'll figure out where this TIF actually is in this shell thing, but it is irritating to hear that we're adding a Cleveland County Fairground, which is not in the Increment District, is not increment generating for, it, it just does, it's moot point at this point, let's just keep on.
Can we take $25 million out of total project cost?
Say that again?
Can we take about $25 million out of the project cost?
Yeah, so one of the things related to your question, Councilmember Wilson, is the effort to try to reduce project costs overall because of the huge amount that we're adding in the effort to do the Entertainment District. The, you'll note that the cultural facility 8.25, 8.75 has been removed from the project cost budget, and that's because the OU Foundation has agreed to include a museum component in the arena itself. So we're still attempting to meet that original project objective of a cultural facility.
So curious, does the statutory review committee have to approve what that project is? What, what that increment, I mean, or, or are we just assuming that an arena is now a cultural center?
No, we're not, definitely not assuming the arena is the cultural facility. What the development agreement with the master developer for the Entertainment District and the arena and the parking garage will include is that a cultural facility component be included in the arena. And that'll be detailed in the development agreement prior to the provision of any assistance in development financing. And the city can be, I think, as aggressive as it feels appropriate on that component. What the, our conversations with the foundation have been, that it would be something that allows for the arena to be open and accessible on non-event days. You know, meaning there would be like a separate entrance that would allow for, you know, like a, you know, a Hall of Fame wall or, you know, I don't, I don't know what the cultural, you know, museum component would be, but that's kind of what they're envisioning, that it would be a separate entrance that allow for people to come in and out of the arena and therefore utilize the Entertainment District when there's not a concert or when there's not a basketball game or some other activity happening at the arena. And again, the efforts to try to get more people there, more people in the Entertainment District and in the south part of UMP, shopping and spending their money. That was one way that we could try to reduce overall project costs, but still meet the objectives of the original project plan. You know, the addition of, of the county project, it is, is not a reduction of project costs. And it is meant to try to address some issues that were raised there. And I'm hopeful to have the opportunity to talk to the review committee about it some more. So this shows project costs, which have been increased by $5 million because of the county project from the last version that you saw.
Councilmember Hickman.
Is the deal financeable without the sales, construction, use tax being included and the county facility being added?
So.
I see that it's 124 million, I think the projections are 126 million without the use tax included. Is that financeable?
You mean the construction use tax?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if, if what the city is putting in to basically pay for the county's facility plus to provide cushion and project cost funds.
Right.
If that was taken back out, which is right now, that use tax is not in the TIF, not, not used to pay any project cost, would it be financeable? Do we know an answer to that question?
I think, I mean, we've looked at it with, it, it's actually been a little while. Now, let me just say, the, the construction sales tax generates significantly more than $5 million. So the cushion that it allows to help with the finançability of the arena project is significant, particularly if we have the opportunity for the Leverage Act match from the state. You know, then we're, we're looking upwards of about $14 million. So that does provide a significant cushion in the finançability question, not only with relationship to the county project. So I don't know that, I can't, I, I don't, I don't have a yes or no answer to your question. But, you know, a decrease in project costs is, you know, that is, I mean, it's less money to fund.
When you take $5 million cost out, but you also take $14 million revenue out too?
Right, if we remove the construction sales tax component, then you take $14 million.
I think that's the question, would we go to, would still be financeable if I have that?
Right, and I haven't analyzed that specifically to know what, what 100.
But we're not, we're not planning on the 14 million. That's not part of what's being put toward the financing, that we're going to get it matched. We're putting in, we estimate, exactly. We're estimating.
Seven and a half, yeah.
Yeah, so my question is, is that match available, whether it's in the TIF, the project, whether the use tax is in the TIF or not?
It must be in the TIF, yeah.
So would the city get the extra, with the 20% that right now the city is getting back in use tax, would we get that part matched?
No, only those amounts that are being allocated to pay authorized project costs have the opportunity for matching under the Leverage Act. And that, that's really the idea of the act, you know, is to try to help utilize development that's not happening otherwise and, you know, give it that boost that it might. Now, it's not allowable at all to match retail sales tax. That's why we're, we're focusing on the construction sales tax. That's the only thing that could potentially be matched. There's a different, couple different ways, you know, that we could look at it. To your point, we currently have it, the construction and use tax component for the entire build out of the north. You know, we could look at it for just TIF five, for example, you know, just those construction sales taxes generated by the arena and the parking garage, which are significant, and trying to utilize those, which of course, the parking garage in the arena wouldn't happen but for this project. So potentially, you, potentially utilizing the construction sales tax from those two projects makes sense to use towards funding authorized project costs, and it's something that the city might consider.
Could that use tax that's matched, could it then be dedicated to another entity, governmental entity, like, like the county's asking for on their, on their county deal in order to have that money then paid out, like we'd get the matching grant, the matching funds from the state and then have it paid like to the Center City TIF, for example, or, or to go towards some other project cost that was a city project that we wanted to be funded? Outside of the project area, just straight, paid straight to the city.
Right, so I actually haven't utilized the Leverage Act in that context. I'm just thinking, thinking about this words of the statute and it can be used to pay, it becomes a part of the sales tax increment, meaning it can be used to pay authorized project costs.
That's good project cost.
So I think that it likely could be used to, you know, and here we've structured it so that it could be used to pay, actually in this instance, it would be used to repay the city's costs associated with funding towards the county project. So it, yes, the answer to that question is yes, it could be used to repay any allocation to the county to do its project.
Okay, let me ask the question this way. As the city's attorney, why would the city commit its use tax dollars that it's not currently? While there's a benefit to leveraging and getting more money, the city in theory is not getting any extra relief from that, we're still putting in the same percentage, the same growth adjustment, same transfer adjustment. We're just providing the cushion for the project costs and funds for the county's project. What, why would the city commit those dollars?
I think the city would only do it if they want to see the, this overall project happen. And if they want to try to provide for finançability to make an arena happen, then the city might consider this approach. If they want to work to get the, their taxing entity partners on board with them to work with this, they might consider this approach. It's not the only approach, but it's, you know, you know, something that we put together that we think can meet those two objectives. You know, again, we haven't had the opportunity to meet with the review committee yet, but, you know, figuring out what they think about the inclusion of the county project and then also providing as, as good a chance for finançability of the Entertainment District project as we can. So if the city wants to meet those two objectives, then this, this is a reasonable approach. So this, this, this is information that you've seen before. You know what the status of TIF two is. TIF four would be established upon approval of an amended, amended project plan and last for 25 years. There's a typo here under TIF five. It would be authorized upon amendment of the project plan, but in our current conversations with the foundation, it would be established in 2019, not 2020. And that's because the construction sales tax piece. If the construction sales tax piece is included, then we need to trigger that Increment District immediately upon construction and they believe that construction will start in 2019. So you're, again, you're familiar with this map. It shows current TIF two, what the carve out of TIF four on the undeveloped property of south of Brock Creek Road would be, and then TIF five as the Increment District. And this is just a chart of what we've been talking about. The sales tax increment split, the 50/50 between the ad valorem taxing jurisdictions changing to 60/40 in, in 2022. The current allocation for the taxing jurisdictions is 50/50 in the project now, and we retain that through 2021, which is when, if the project plan were not amended, authorized project cost would be paid. So we thought from a taxing jurisdiction point of view that it made sense to maintain that allocation through what would be decompletion of the project where there are no amendments. And then for purposes of trying to generate a significant amount of increment to, to see these projects be done, we are recommending that the ad valorem increment split from 40% to the taxing jurisdictions and 60% to the project. As we discussed in some detail before, the first five years have a 70 to the city, 30 to the project split with the taxing, or, excuse me, with the transfer adjustment included. And then in 2024, it would switch to 50/50 with the transfer, transfer adjustment included. And again, another typo, that square at the bottom should say 2032 to the end maintains the 50/50 split. And there's still the transfer adjustment, but not the $800,000 fixed. That lasts through 2031 when TIF two ends. Of course, when TIF two ends, the 13.65 million per year flows to the city at the end of fiscal year 2031. So this is just meant to summarize the things we've been talking about. The project is meant to meet these high level goals that have been voiced to me after working with the city for several months now on this project. I, I am fully aware of the need for immediate relief to the general fund and we've tried to maximize that, which we've talked a lot about tonight. Norman Public Schools has analyzed its, its impacts with this proposed allocation, so they know what, what we're trying to do and those efforts that we're trying to make to make sure that they can receive maximum benefit.
Councilmember Wilson.
The fourth bullet point implementing Calis and RTKL master plan enhances finalizing the North Bay's lease for potentially three Norman Forward projects, including the senior center. I have a huge amount of frustration with this bullet point. Enhances finalizing the North Bay's lease, holding hostage until an agreement is made is what that says to me.
They have something they want. They have something we want, I should say.
Right, so our, our indications with the.
It's true.
It's true, but it's.
We want it really bad.
Not, that's not a partnership, that is not a community partner.
No, let's put it on the table that we had this verbal agreement in 2015 before Norman Forward was passed. This is a new contingency added because they want this project done that badly, so.
The mental health, the mental health group also changed their words as well. It's not the health leader that didn't really play with the.
We changed what we were asking for, too.
So our, our indications from the foundation are that. So our, our indications from the foundation are that OU will be, with its new president coming onboard, will be reviewing the lease agreement that the city has previously approved. And our project plan language indicates that implementation of the, what's defined in the project plan as the entertainment district arena and parking garage project is conditioned upon approval of that lease agreement. So even if the city were to approve the structure that is this project plan as drafted, this indicates that the city would not move forward on providing the assistance in development financing for the entertainment district project until the lease is approved. So that's how we've tried to endeavor to, to, to deal with that issue. It's kind of goes to Councilman Holman's point, that they're also hoping that we, the city will consider moving forward on this. And in relationship to that, also the, as you know, the foundation has provided a financing commitment for the senior center project. Should that even be needed by the city? I know that you've been looking in some depth about the possibility of Norman Forward funds being available because of the Griffin, the Griffin property lease. So ideally, we wouldn't need to use that financing component, but if, if so, they agree to provide that.
And we think that the amount that would be generated would be enough to finance the senior citizen center, the, the extra, the new amount that the north part would be generating enough for Norman Forward to actually fund the senior citizen center over the.
Yeah, I mean, that full build out, it generates significantly more than would be necessary for the senior center.
And that's what we use to finance, yes. Councilmember Hickman.
This may be a dumb question. I was just looking, is the project plan, does it have signatures on it? Is it considered an agreement or is it just a document of the city's?
It's a document of the city, approved by ordinance.
It doesn't, because in some conversations, there have been people made reference to, if we change this or don't do that, we're breaching an agreement. We're going back on what we promised people. Is the, is the project plan an agreement that the city is bound to? And that people can rely upon and could result in a lawsuit if we approve it, but we don't end up doing it?
Um, so the, the project plan is a document of the city, approved by ordinance. The authorization of financing is done via separate resolution and pursuant to separate development agreements. So those would be the next steps that would have to be taken in order to, for example, provide the assistance in development financing for the entertainment district project. Some of the contractual obligations that I think people have been referring to are in the development agreements that have stemmed from the approval of the 2006 project plan.
Okay, and you brought up President Galliglie. Has anybody reached out to him? I mean, if he's curious and wanting to wait to talk about the North Base land and what's going to happen with the North Park facilities and things of that sort. I mean, I, I, I don't know if he supports this arena. We've got a new president of the university coming onboard. It seems to me that if he's concerned about all of OU's land, because I noticed that there, by the way, the Board of Regents are meeting today and they are addressing policies and things. They did not put a piece of property on Boyd Street, what's it called? The, the condo deal there, I can't think of the name of it right now. Yeah, Newman Hall up for sale because they're maybe looking at their property holdings. I mean, do we even know that the president of the university supports this project?
I have not had any conversations.
I mean, I've not talked to the guy, maybe others have.
With them directly, I, I do think that others have. I mean, I'm relying on, you know, the conversations that have been relayed to me from foundation representatives, but they have not, you know, he has not come out publicly and said one way or the other. And my impression is that he's waiting until he takes off, officially takes office to do so.
That's 11 days.
Which is in 11 days, so, I mean, my, my, you know, strong guidance to the foundation representatives has been, you know, the city needs to know where OU stands on this. So a strong represent, or a representation of any kind will help the city in, in its, in its analyzing of this project. So I'm hopeful that that happens.
I think that certainly needs to happen and I'll just make a comment that I've said before. I think somebody, and I'm happy to be the one to do it if, if somebody wants me to, somebody on behalf of the city, whether it's the city manager or the mayor, whoever, needs to make the phone call to the university and say, look, we had a deal in 2015 for the Norman Ford projects. You want to be a partner, you don't hold hostages, it's not how you negotiate in good faith. And if they want us to give good faith consideration to this, then they need to honor the deal that they made. Our lawyers negotiated the exchange agreement. They approved it, they were supposed to vote on it maybe in January, then again in March. And now all of a sudden, oh, they didn't have time, they were doing the president reviews. Oh, now the president wants to review all of the, the land holdings. Whatever the excuse is, we all know that it's because of this and now it's embedded in here. And in my opinion, as someone who negotiates settlements for clients all the time and does mediation, that's not good faith negotiation. If they want us to act in good faith and considering what they want, they need to approve the land exchange now and then let's have a conversation. In my opinion, I, I just think it's inappropriate for them to try to play hardball that way with the city. Now, if the city wants to be pushed around, that's fine. I'm happy to, like I said, to make the call just as an average Joe. And I've actually explored ways to try to get ahold of the president, but, you know, don't know how to do that. But I, I think that somebody, and maybe whether it's other community leaders in this town, have already had the conversation with them, they need to let him know that, that in my opinion, and I'm not saying it's his fault, whatever how it went down, that in my opinion, that's not negotiating in good faith. The, holding that hostage is not appropriate.
I, I have reached out through some of his schedulers and I'll see if I get any kind of response.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman.
I think I completely agree and I think we absolutely should impress upon him the urgency of this because he did have the time to weigh in on the policy change allowing OU employees to run for office. So if he has time to weigh in even before he becomes president on things like that, I would assume that on a project so integral to the university, because we obviously know that OU and OU Foundation are very, very close since they can, since they can push us around on Norman Forward projects and OU Foundation can make claims with certainty about how OU and the Board of Regents will handle this land swap, he should weigh in now. If he has time to weigh in on policies like allowing employees to run for state office, then he should have the time to take a look at this and make a determination because we're being pushed fast. We're being told that the investors' money will not be here if we wait longer than August, that money will rain from the sky if this is actually implemented, yet investors do not want to wait any longer. And so if investors do not want to wait any longer, President Galliglie should weigh in now because I'm, I'm very frustrated with how this has gone down and I think we need to hear from him. If he's gonna, if he, if they want to use him as the excuse to hold it up, then they should tell us whether or not he's going to weigh in and set a date.
Okay, let's start on. Councilmember Hickman.
And I guess my only feedback to you, Emily, for what it's worth, is I know you've worked a lot of hard on this and I appreciate you taking my input, everything you've done, I really do. And, and as I've said to people, you know, I was a former air force officer who was a contract officer and had the duty to sign off and spend taxpayers' money. So I think we have a fiduciary duty to give this a good faith look and conversation to do what's the right with the public, public dollars. And I'm generally trying to do that. But you threw a new wrinkle today that I wasn't anticipating, that I'm honestly not a real happy camper about, and that's that sales and use tax. My calcul, my just rough sitting here and, and looking at the numbers, over a six to eight year period of time, that's about an $800,000 average cut in the city budget, which is completely in opposite in my view of conversations that you and I and others have had about the dire situation and the challenges we have with our city budget. I respect the folks with the county, I'm not opposed to trying to help them with the issue they want to have solved, but taking money from the city, in my opinion, is not the solution to that.
Okay, just, I just want to reiterate a couple of points on that. I, it does, you recall from that other slide that we're still at the 2.1 million over and above what the city received from year 2018 to 2019. So I mean, that, you know, I, I know, or I have been focused on that number as very important to account for that five year immediate relief to the general fund. And then secondly, you know, those construction sales tax, particularly in the entertainment district, simply do not exist unless the arena and the parking garage are built. So it's, you know, it's that issue of those, those taxes, those taxes wouldn't be available to the city. It's not taking away construction sales taxes to the city if the project isn't built.
Emily, I understand, I'm not going to argue with you, but in all due respect, if that area of there develops, regardless of what, how it develops, whether it's all residential or otherwise, the city will get use tax from that development and that, that property is likely going to develop. It may not be an arena, it may not be as much.
Yeah, I agree.
And so whatever, so 20% of what we were going to get, I'm just saying, you know, I feel like the city's horse trading away something in our use tax that wasn't previously on the table and I'm not sure we're getting something in return for it that is a benefit to the city. And I'm just pointing out that your slide today says $9.6 million per year average, 2024 to 2031, and the prior slide had 10.54 million in it.
Right.
And so my rough calculation, that's about a $9 million cut to the city budget over that period of time from 2024 to 2031. Those are your numbers. And so that's what I'm relying my statement upon. And I'm just, like I said, I wasn't anticipating that and I, I just am not necessarily comfortable with it because of the current state of our budget.
Okay, so I, I just want to caution us to think about it as a cut. I absolutely understand what you're, what you're saying and I, and I.
Less of an increase to the general fund, less relief to the general fund.
The other point is, yes, construction sales tax will exist on the build out of the north, even if an arena is not built, but not to the tune of $189 million construction cost of an arena and $52 million construction costs of a parking garage. The sales, the construction sales tax generated from that kind of large scale development, you know, is very different. So I, just that for a little context, but I understand exactly what you're saying, Councilman Hickman.
So if we don't, we can't think of anything that would replicate the amount of money that, that would generate in construction sales tax, other things that would be built, it couldn't be housing or.
Right, the, a, a less dense housing, you know, would generate less construction sales tax, you know, from that. It's the size and scale and density of the proposed development that generate the significant amount of construction sales tax.
Okay, Councilmember Castleberry.
I think you just said it, but if the arena's five acres, Emily, you're not going to get $190 million of other commercial, industrial, residential construction in that five acres. So let me ask you this, right now, OU does not pay use tax on projects they construct, correct? We don't pay it, when we do, we don't pay it. We are for Norman Forward because we have it.
I don't believe so, I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm assuming government, government entities don't pay use tax on their materials.
I assume that they treat it like we do for their own projects.
Right.
But again, they debt finance a lot of their projects as well. And I would suspect that if they debt financed them, then they may have to.
What would the, what would the financing, I mean, they do with it?
Just like us, where if an authority is doing the project, then they can't, they can't extend their sales tax exception.
To the authority.
Get belonned themselves.
I don't know the answer to that either. I mean, that makes a lot of sense what Anthony's saying, but I don't know.
Okay, other questions, Councilmember Beerman.
I know the TIF Oversight Committee met today. Did they have to say about the amendments to the original project plan? As it, as it's wrapped up in this? Did they make a recommendation to us?
We didn't really get into that. It was really just an update of the RTKL master plan and then also brought them up to speed on what the Planning Commission had recommended with the PUD amendment. And then Dr. Rogers had a presentation of some of her analysis and that was all that was covered.
So they didn't make any kind of recommendation to us, even though we're supposed to approve this?
We wanted to bring it to you guys first and then.
To them.
Then we're going to take it, if you want us to take it, to the statutory review committee and then we will plan on bringing it back to them in July if, if we're still talking about it. But that was the plan.
We're supposed to be voting on this PUD before they meet again, correct?
The PUD will be July 10th, right.
And their meeting when?
Their meeting is the 3rd Tuesday.
And the PUD is not really their purview.
That's not within the purview of the Oversight Committee.
That's a zoning issue.
That's a zoning, but we did bring them up to speed today, yeah.
They didn't have any problems or questions about it. But that wouldn't be typically some, they talk about the financing piece.
So as Jeff said, if they, if you choose to continue the consideration project process consistent with the Local Development Act, then the amended project plan would go to the statutory review committee for its review and consideration and then to Planning Commission and then back to you for two public hearings prior to a vote.
Yes, so what we're talking about right now is a resolution at our next council meeting. The resolution would be to send this, what, the project plan to the, to the statutory review committee as it is right now for their input. That's basically what we're saying.
Yes, Councilmember Hickman.
And I guess the only, my thanks is my last comment. Things that we've also talked about that I don't see in here is two important things to me. One is something that discusses the parking garage and the dedicated revenue stream in some form or fashion to facilitate parking facilities in other parts of town. Why is that not in here? My, one question, part one, and then part two is something in here that I think I've used the terminology and then indemnification, but something that addresses the what if? What if this doesn't work and there's challenges with the arena and its operation and operational costs? You know, does the city have any kind of a clawback provisions and indemnification rights? You know, they can trigger with, with somebody and, and maybe those are not necessarily, since this is not an agreement, maybe they're not necessarily something that goes in here, but couldn't they be in here like in the miscellaneous provisions to provide guidance? You know, so that we don't end up negotiating a development agreement and it's not discussed in here at all? And then we run into a problem getting something included? That's part of my concern is that, you know, a little bit of the balancing act between the project plan, the development agreement, there are things that maybe rightfully belong in the development agreement because that's that binding agreement, but I think are important that we're communicating in the project plan that, you know, we are anticipating and are expecting that, and that makes some of us comfortable that we don't get to where we pass a project plan and we're negotiating a development agreement and, you know, we're still negotiating and, and maybe renegotiating and that's part of my concern.
Right, so to your second question first, I've endeavored to include the language that I think that you're seeking and that I think is very important.
And if it's in, I missed it, I apologize.
Oh, that's fine, it's a big document. It's in, on page 14 in section 10b5 where it defines entertainment district arena and parking garage project costs. It indicates what will be, what, you know, could be in the development agreement in terms of what the city wants to see as part of the development, including, for example, the cultural facility, including all the public infrastructure improvements necessary to make the entertainment district happen, including the arena and including the parking garage. It also indicates that no assistance in development financing is provided towards those project costs unless and until the developer has provided evidence of financing of the entertainment district, the arena and the parking garage. So another safeguard, we're not going to authorize the issuance of any funds until we know that they can fund the rest of it. Obviously, it costs a lot more than $90 million to build all that. So we want to make sure that they have their financing in line. The closing on any public financing is contingent upon the closing of the private financing necessary for the arena, the parking garage and the public infrastructure improvements in the entertainment district.
Yeah, let me just clarify my question, I guess, because this, I understand, this is an important piece from the finance standpoint, but this is a 25-year deal. What if during that 25 years, operating wise, that's, that was what I meant by the what if? What if the, it doesn't cash flow and whoever's operating this, this unknown entity still is, runs into operating cost problems? And they either A, come back to the city and say, hey, we need more money because, you know, we're having problems with the operating costs. I think that the city needs to have some protections to say, if, if that happens, OU Foundation or whoever, you're going to be responsible for covering any shortages and operating costs so that the city doesn't find ourselves in a, in a pickle of being, having to. so that the city doesn't find ourselves in a, in a pickle of being, having to negotiate. It's more like we are right now with the university where, you know, they're holding something hostage. And, you know, what I mean by that is that they hold the arena hostage of it's going to shut down. And I can, you know, hear those conversations now of you've invested all this money out there, city, what's another $2 million to bail them out? That we either require some kind of a bond, some kind of insurance, some kind of a indemnity that the OU Foundation will step in and cover any shortages and operating costs to, you know, foreclose that risk, if you will, to the, to the city and to our, our partners for that matter. Uh, that it doesn't become a, a, a cost down the road, you know, to the city and to the Adverlorum partners. And I don't know if a bond, you know, insurance, the full faith and credit of the OU Foundation, I'm sure any of those things are probably options. I just think that's something that we should have a conversation about and consider adding. Because I agree with you that this is important in the financing piece, but there's also, I mean, 25 years is a long time to operate an arena. And if, if there ends up being some snag during that 25-year period of time, you know, it's likely that they're going to come back to the city and our partners for, for money, uh, I, I would, I would, would think is a risk. So.
Yeah, I think that, um, what, what we're trying to do touches on that. I understand your desire for more specificity, um, in, in this paragraph five. You know, the last sentence there says that will provide for performance goals timelines and appropriate remedies in the event of non-performance. And I hear you to be saying you'd like some specificity on that. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
It says development agreement is going to address that though.
The development agreement absolutely will de- address that. We're also having a conversation about a master financing agreement um, with the appropriate entity, um, to, you know, make sure that these questions are addressed. Um, in addition to the development, uh, obligations, you know, more of the, you know, what we want to see versus how we're going to get it done. But absolutely.
No, I, I understand. And you're probably, I mean, I'm putting my lawyer hat on and I'm thinking, this is like an LOI, letter of intent. And I'm going to make sure that the things that are key provisions are in that LOI. So when it comes time to negotiate the actual purchase agreement, I'm not running into problems because I can point back and say, remember that was in the letter of intent and you agreed to the letter of intent. And so in my mind, Emily, that's kind of how I look at it. I understand there's going to be a development agreement, but that still has to be negotiated at some point down the road. And this is a way of signaling to the developer and to everybody before we even approve the first thing that these are some important provisions that some of us on council, majority of us on council, whatever, think are important and are fundamental to actually getting this thing approved and moving forward.
Okay.
And to me, that protection to the city over the course of the 25-year life cycle is something that I've heard from many constituents as a concern. And I think it's something that would be a valid ask. And right now, I would assume if the developer and the foundation would be willing to agree to it because they want to also make the deal happen and everybody's confident right now that this is going to work. So now's the time to make the ask, it seems to me.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll dig in a little more on that.
I do think you might want to say a little bit about, I mean, the thing that, that I keep coming back to is what we're, what we would if we get to the project agreements and, and we're just at the project, we're just talking about the plan right now. Then what we're obligating is the increment. And if the increment doesn't make, then that's not, that's not really our issue. And if, when, when they come back and say, we're having trouble with the operating funds, we're not obligating ourselves to the operating funds. I mean, that's not part of the agreement.
A separate ask, absolutely. And I hear you to be saying you want to try to control that ask.
What do you do with a big fat empty arena?
Right, right.
That's why you get to, that's why you get to protection now.
Right.
So it would be your lease agreement that then protects you because?
That can be part of your collateral.
I understand the, from the conversations at the foundation is ha- having with the master developer prospects, that the, um, agreement with the basketball programs at OU is what really, you know, makes or breaks this deal. So operational issues are flushed out significantly when they have the signed OU basketball program deal for the arena. So I, I think that, you know, that will, if that exists, then we have, um, a lot of, uh, security related to the operation of the arena. So I just know that from their negotiation conversations that they're having now, that that's, you know, kind of position number one. We have to have that.
Okay. Councilmember Holman had his hand up.
Just clarifying along those same, same lines. The arena overall, if it's built, the city has no legal obligation in this contract. No responsibility, no liability to have anything to do with it. To operate it, to maintain it, to, uh, pick up any shortfall. I mean, that could be a, uh, community issue to decide in the future if that were to happen, it were to be unused and there had to be some sort of solution. I could definitely see them coming and asking the local government to help. But there's no legal obligation in here to the city. There's no risk to the city about this arena to be responsible for it in any way.
Right. Uh, right. There's no responsibility for operation or maintenance of the arena. What, what this document would do is put into place, um, a financing structure that could allow for the provision of public assistance. Again, like we, like we talked about, additional steps have to happen before that happens.
What, what, this whole thing, what is the risk to the city? What is our risk of approving this whole thing?
So the risk to the city is, um, if, if this were to be approved, the increment that is generated by it go, being available to pay authorized project costs. So at, at risk is the city, is the city's, or the authorities more specifically, obligation to pay authorized project costs with increment that's generated by the project.
But if it generates nothing, then we don't, we're not obligated to anything.
Well, we don't, we spend the cost.
If the development doesn't happen, then there's no increment.
So what is the city's risk? So we, can we, do we have a risk of losing money or doing, anything happening to us? Or being responsible for anything, if we say that's the case?
We are responsible for paying authorized project costs that currently exist. Of course, there is an increment district that exists and we are responsible, the city is responsible for paying those authorized project costs.
But only if increment is generated.
Increment is being.
Our general fund is not at risk.
Our general fund is not at risk. Increment is being generated by TIP 2. So we are obligated to use that money to pay for authorized project costs. But that is money that is generated by the increment district and not in our general fund.
And if it does, so if it doesn't happen, there's nothing. The city doesn't have to.
Right. And I think that's an important point to make, especially in relation to a large public financial assistance that could be provided, um, towards the entertainment district and arena. You know, this calls for an upfront financing of that amount. Now, that's important to note because we would not want to authorize that amount or any amount of assistance in development financing towards the project unless we know that the rest of their financing is lined up and ready to go. Because otherwise, I mean, that, that's, you know, I would never recommend that the city do that. So authorizing this project plan does not go spend that $90 million.
Developer can't meet their loan or whatever. We don't, we're not responsible.
We need, we need all of their financing lined up. We need to review it. We need to believe it. We need to know that it's going to happen. And it needs to be, uh, authori- issued simultaneously with their closing on their private funds.
And the foundation is the guarantor. Is that correct?
No. Could be. We, we've talked about it. We're not quite that far down the road.
Someone else is going to be the guarantor.
It will not be the city's general fund.
Not be the city.
Guarantor will not be the city's general fund. And it will not be a, um, full faith, you know, credit or anything on behalf of the city.
No bank is coming to the city and saying, well, this thing, somebody needs to pay up, you guys.
The increment's the only collateral.
Only if there's increment on the table that is authorized to pay those project costs.
And if there's no increment generated, then there wouldn't be any, that's because if there's only increment generated, it's because there's no activity out there, basically.
Right. Increment will continue to be generated by TIP 2.
Which means if there was no TIF and there was no activity out there, that would affect the general fund anyway. We get 100% of nothing.
Right. The only caveat there is increment is being.
70% of nothing.
The only caveat there is increment is being generated by TIP 2.
And, and then at that point, you could go back and make a decision if you wanted to do something about that.
Sure. But we can't obligate future councils.
Whatever.
It's a question. It's a, it's a question. It's a question.
So the, um, the, i- if the project plan is adopted and the issuance is authorized by the Norman Tax Indemnity Finance Authority, then, you know, that's, that's the entity that's authorizing the issuance of funds.
I mean, I want to say that, we can't sell future councils, hey, if the arena goes under, you've got, you've got to make up the shortfall. I mean, that would be a decision that would be made at that point in time. But right now, the only commitment we're making is that we're pledging the increment towards this.
Right. Nothing.
If that doesn't cover it, we're not making them do it. I mean, that'd be a separate decision at that time.
That would be a separate decision. To cover any kind of operational cost would be a separate, separate decision.
Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Bierman.
No, she was first. I jumped out. My hand is bigger. I got a cartoon hand or something.
Waving it up. So I have a, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. My first comment is that this, this will have an impact on the general fund because of what is being dedicated from TIP number two. And on top of that, if we build something and no one comes and we don't see that growth that is projected from this plan, then we have lost out. We were, we had promised big things from the first, from the first plan that did not pan out. And so I do think, I do think that that is, that that is an issue. We have money that is going to be pulled away from the general fund from TIP number two.
Do you think it's correct to say that it did not pan out financially? Not financially.
And we don't know, we don't know what the next few years are going to bring. I didn't see, I didn't see any, uh, mention or indication of the possibility of a recession in the 25 or 30-year plan that we're talking about. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered. I frankly don't think we're more than 10 years away from something like that. And my concern is what happens if we, this is built and it doesn't pan out the way we think. We already have a struggling south part of our city. I don't want to end up with a struggling north part of our city. And I also have concerns about the parking garage and who's going to own it, who's going to run it? And what happens if we don't end up with the revenue that is projected to come out of that to possibly help us with a parking garage in other parts of the city?
Answer was.
Other questions?
Part one is okay.
You know, I mean, I, I, and so I really, I really struggle with saying that we, we might not be legally liable for $102 million in total project costs. But this is going to have an impact on the growth of our general fund. I can see Anthony sitting back there and kind of reacting every now and then when things are being said because I do, I do struggle with, with what is the, don't play poker, Anthony. Because we are going to be dedicating money from TIP number two that otherwise would be going to the general fund. And I don't think anyone will sit here and say that we don't have a budget problem.
Right.
And so, you know, that, that is a concern of mine. And I really do have a question of, of who's going to own and run the parking garage? What happens if the, if the revenue projections from that don't meet expectations? Because that will have an impact on maybe some things we want to do in other parts of the city. So, you know, and, and I still just can't get away from the thought of what happens if this doesn't pan out? And, and what OU, what OU, the OU Foundation's liability is, what happens if it starts to not pan out and they sell the land? You know, we might not be legally responsible for the project costs from that point forward. But if they sell the land and someone else decides to do something different with it, what happens to what's already been built? What, what recourse do we have if we don't actually get what is, what is, what is projected in this project plan?
I mean, if someone else buys it, we still collect the tax, right?
They're still, they have to agree.
Increment is still generated even if an arena isn't built. Um, you know, so I think, you know, we just wouldn't enter into the agreement to pay the entertainment district project costs.
So the money does come back to us?
The money comes back to pay other authorized project costs that we enter into development agreements to pay.
But we've been told that the arena doesn't get built, that none of the other stuff gets built.
We don't need a parking.
Right. I think that, that would lead to the foundation just selling off property. You know, and then this project plan, you know, none, none of the projects contemplated in this project plan are, make any sense. So it would be a reexamination of that. But can I address the parking garage?
Yes, please.
Um, I, the conversations that I've had and, you know, we, the foundation knows that this is an important issue to the city, um, and to the county because of the multi-jurisdictional parking authority that is being contemplated. The conversations that I've had to date indicate ownership in, um, the, uh, in a private entity. And with a revenue stream that is shared, a, a portion of the net of the revenue stream shared with, um, the new parking authority. Likely it would be the Norman Tax Indemnity Financing Authority until the, uh, parking authority is built. Now, I know that there is a, um, a, a need or want for the parking garage to be publicly owned. I think that that should be something that the city continues to think about because of, um, the, you know, difficulty and hassle of owning and running the parking garage for a couple of different reasons. One, the parking authority doesn't exist and, um, and is not yet, you know, uh, accustomed, has never yet owned a parking garage. Secondly, I think it could really benefit the, the city and the county and the parking authority when it exists to try to just, you know, reap the benefits of the operations of the parking garage and, and avoid the hassle of, of actually owning it. It's most important to the developer to own the parking garage because of its relationship to the arena. You know, it's like physically connected and should be built with and, you know, at the same time as the arena. And I don't mean to say that that can't happen and it'd also be owned by, uh, a parking authority. I think that that can still happen. But I do think it's, the city should continue to still examine whether it actually wants the parking garage to be in public ownership. Um, or if it would rather just try to benefit directly from the revenue stream that would be, uh, created by the parking garage and utilize that money to help, uh, issue and pay for the bonds associated with parking garages elsewhere in the city. So I, I, I think the answer is I don't, I don't have a detailed answer. But I do think that the city, um, and county should consider whether it would behoove them to not own it.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson, then Councilmember Castleberry.
Um, so the, actually the parking authority situation and the parking garage or structure is the only part of this project I actually kind of like. Because I feel like that actually adds value back to other parts of the city. So I just want to put that out there. But then who's the developer? And all this, did we, have we heard that or do we know that? Did I miss that in some part of this?
It has not been chosen by the foundation. Um, it's my understanding that they have narrowed it to three. And, um, even as of yesterday, we're doing interviews. Um, so I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. And then that developer would own the parking garage and then give a portion of it?
So, yeah, whoever the master developer entity is, and then again, that has yet to be determined. I think the chosen developer will be a partial owner. Even the foundation might be a partial owner. I mean, however they structure that entity, um, might, you know, would own the arena and the parking garage. And what we're trying to figure out with them is what portion of the revenue stream off of the parking garage should be provided to, um, this new parking authority, the, the Norman Tax Indemnity Financing Authority until the parking authority exists in order for that specific revenue stream to be utilized to fund these other parking garages that the city wants to see. Can I?
I was just going to add, uh, we, we do have a chair of EDAB here. And I think that's another step in the mayor's timeline that, uh, we think the Kimmelhorn study should be going to EDAB maybe right after the first of, uh, next month. And then if this continues to move forward, then we would also like to bring these components to EDAB to get their input and advice as well as far as the parking garage facility.
I think I remember from past conversations that that revenue stream is in the $500,000 to $800,000 range? Possibly depending on the size and, like, in the ballpark yearly.
There, there was a line item in the CSNL study was about $800,000, somewhere in that. Uh, not sure if that was gross or net, but all of those things will think, are things that will need to be informed first by the Kimmelhorn study about what is that revenue stream would be important or necessary for us to do the downtown and the campus corner garages. And then we'll take that information and then start working on negotiating this. Similar with all the other components, we wouldn't authorize, um, moving forward with the parking facility or that construction without having a detailed development agreement that would map, that would line those components out. Puts the structure in place. Still got to go do the development agreement to address these very issues. And we definitely want some feedback from EDAB through the Kimmelhorn study.
Councilmember Castleberry is next, and then Councilmember.
Just quickly on the parking garage, I don't want a part of the net. I want a part of the gross. I'm not interested in having a part of loss. I want my money upfront, whether it's 10%, whatever it is. I want all the gross. I want all the gross. If it doesn't make money, I don't care. I want to be an expense. I don't want to be a revenue share or a profit share.
Very good comment. We got a similar comment from one of the attorneys helping the county a couple of months ago.
Okay, Councilmember Allison.
Yes, one of my questions is regarding the parking garage we're talking about. I mean, the parking garage is going to cost, the parking garage, entertainment district and arena is going to cost more than $90 million, right?
Much, much more, yes.
So we can't expect to get the whole portion of the revenue of the parking garage? So, but I don't know, I mean, if it's not making money, I mean, are we still able to get, we still have our captured revenue that's not?
Well, I think that's Councilmember Castleberry's comment about the gross. You know, once we define a revenue stream that we need to help us with our other facilities, then that's what we're going to negotiate for, a revenue stream that we need, not, we're not going to get necessarily tied up with the net or gross other than it has to be guaranteed.
Right.
So we're saying we just want a guaranteed amount of money coming from that parking garage because it really isn't, if it's not making money.
Well, rough numbers, we put $50 million in the parking garage and they guarantee that's $4 million a year. I'd take 10% return on our money, something to that effect. You'd say, hey, I want $4 million, I want $5 million, whatever it is, I want X amounts that we could use, know it's coming in to get a return on our investment. I mean, if we pay for half the garage, I mean, you say, well, we pay for half, you pay for half and we get half there, we'll split it with you. Well, I don't want to split half the cost with them either, I'd rather say, okay, we'll figure out that rate, something to that effect.
Yeah, normally parking garages are not moneymakers, so.
Well, that's why I don't want to.
Kind of work through some detail. Again, I'm anxious to get this Kimmelhorn study and sift through that and get some feedback.
Okay, all right. We're to the point, we've had some suggestions of some more specificity on language having to do with the parking facility and also kind of indemnification issues protecting the city. So could, if we're ready to have this go on, if it goes to the statutory committee, it has to be in the form of a resolution that we would pass at the council meeting on Tuesday. So could, can you craft some language that would be helpful on these two issues that were brought up?
Yes, I can.
So that that could go out to the council and they could look at it and?
Yes.
So that's where we are then. This will, we will plan on it going forward as a resolution on Tuesday night and we'll expect to get some language changes before it goes out in the packet that the council members can get. I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I've got family waiting.